All right now, so I'm gonna pause the recording right now. How do I know if it's paused?
Oh, Sue, when you. Can you roll call for us?
Richard Seiler?
Present.
Joe Mann?
Here.
Dale Robbins?
Present.
EG Garcia?
Present.
Tim Olson?
Present.
Paul Brown?
Present.
Jim Bonker?
Present.
And Kimball Big Horse.
I'm gonna skip through, because I think Kimball's gonna be here shortly, so I don't think we'll worry about excusing his absence right now. Looks like on our agenda, we're gonna look at the meeting minutes, and go through our schedule for this year, on the dates of our when we'll be meeting, which is pretty much a second Wednesday of every month. It's like we have to look at the election of a chair and a vice chair for 23, 24, and then move into the workshop and get going on RV, I think. You guys should've seen me in the back at plenty of information of what special events permit. Let's look at the minutes from December 14th. Does anybody have any comments on that? Got a motion to approve the second? All in favor, approval of the December 14th minute is written?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We also, in our so on the planning commission meeting schedule, I made one comment to Lisa on this one, June 7th. It was the only one that I saw, shooting June 14th. And our, and our outlook calendar that Lisa sent out is correct, it won't work anything soon. Does anybody have any comments on on our schedule for this next year? Also recognize that on the schedule, we can make decisions if something comes up, adjust it somewhat, as long as we're doing it for nothing, we just couldn't do it last minute. Often times often times, I know there's some on that we have skipped during the summer months, just we don't, don't kind of So can I get a move to approve the meeting schedule with that June 7th corrected to June 14th? So like
Sorry.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Let's see.
So the next thing that is the election of running commission chair and vice chair, and I'm gonna want to have a whole conversation as to what process you would use.
Okay, let's, let's first let Kimball welcome to our meeting, and let the minutes show Kimball's present. What process to use?
So.
I don't want 15 elections going on.
Just a thought. Enough, enough, that's, that's what I what, so, so what city council is on the ask, is the vote on table and ask for the end of them, and then they vote on
We wrote it on paper.
Yeah, we've done that before.
Want to skip that part, and just, does it make care of it just?
And the other thing, is just take nominations, and then, and then you just, once you have a motion, a second, you can vote on your nominations. We've done it all three ways.
Okay.
So.
So, so do we have anybody that would like to do the chair and the vice chair? Right now, that's myself and Joe Mann. Any volunteers? Anybody would like to be? Anybody like to nominate?
I'd nominate Richard as chair.
I'd like that.
Okay.
And, and I'd like to make a comment. I second your nomination, as I was going to nominate you as well. I am not one who believes anyone should stay in place in any political office for a lifetime, or almost seemingly a lifetime. But over my years here at Liberty Lake, as I watched the commission run this business, and while being a partner here on this commission, I have found you to be professional, knowledgeable, funny, friendly, and very capable of continuing on. Not that other commission went up, but I thought about this before coming in today. And I am really pleased to allow this motion as a way of saying yes to continuing good leadership versus just because.
Thank you.
Well said.
Well said. I'd like to nominate Joe again, since he's here. Any other nominations? Be okay. Shall we vote? I guess, let's just go with, we can just do one vote for myself as chair, and Joe as the vice chair? Or would you like to be the chair? Okay, okay. So, all in favor of myself and Joe being chair, vice chair respectively?
Aye.
Close. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
And thank you, that's, I, I like doing this, so it's sometimes it's challenging, but it's easy to stand line, so it's not that hard.
I thought more keeping me.
Well, I, yeah, that might work too.
No, Richard, I actually want to say one quick thing, I really do like the way you're able to articulate our plans, what we're doing here with city council. And I would love to listen to that, I could, that's a real skill.
Thank you, thank you.
The commission energy, pause in the meeting, so that we can get a big group shot of the funding commission for our website.
Yeah, let's, let's do the applause, and we'll, we'll get our group photo. Where are we taking the group photo at?
Sue, right in front of, flags on here, on the side of the table.
Okay.
This way. This way there.
Okay, and I am like You can help me for a moment, yes.
Other side of the table.
Or go over here. This, this other side.
This one. We're ready to be lighting the screen, so I'm gonna take a shot of this stuff. We gotta get the good looking people in the front.
Yes.
We need a department and
That's perfect. Very good. I'm on the frame.
Oh. Sideways. We'll take a couple of these. Good.
Thank you. Okay. So, before we go into our workshops, we've got a couple one in our audience, a citizen that would like to request to speak, and I can make that where he can with approval of our, our commission to speak now, if you like, rather than at the end of the meeting. I'm not sure which way you'd like to go, but, but if, if we could, and then we also have somebody online that would like that, so can I get a motion to go ahead and move that citizen comments up to people with workshops?
So.
Everybody in agreement?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So, I have Charles Jengs, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Is this on?
No.
Yeah.
There should be a button right on top, and then a green light will go on.
Green light?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Who's on the commission, good afternoon, well it's later in the afternoon. The name is Charles Jengs. I'm a resident of Liberty Lake. Originally bought property here in 2015, and then finally moved into my home in January of 2018, from Maui. Now, a lot of people ask, why did you move from Maui to Liberty Lake? Well, I like the outdoors and the northwest, so I made the move. On Maui, I was the director of public works for over 10 years. And I got a lot of work in, in the public and private sector on the island, building homes, commercial, light industrial, those kinds of facilities. What I'd like to just bring up today is something that I brought into as a resident, I live in Legacy Ridge, 123 South Park View Court, if that makes any difference. Went into something that I thought was, should be of concern, and that is, when an applicant comes in, comes in for a building permit, applies for a building permit, in most jurisdictions, the jurisdiction will require some proof of legal access to the lot. And the, and this, in the particular case of Legacy Ridge, we had a homeowner who came in, applied for a building permit, and used as a driveway, not the private street that was constructed to access his lot. His lot was immediately adjacent to that lot, but went over some common area to establish a driveway to get to his lot. Now, the common area is a part of the zoning approval, it's, it's a, it's a quantifiable number, there are so many acres of common area in the project. The problem I see with this, and the problem that I think needs to be corrected, is that if, if there isn't some clear legal mechanism to allow that access, and I'm, I'm not saying the access is bad, I'm just saying getting the access and establishing that, that access in a legal manner, is a part of the permit process, should be in the domain of the city, should be something the city should require, because if you don't, then sometime in the future, you might find yourself talking to attorneys about no legal access. Having companies saying, gee, my client wants to buy this house, but there is no legal access. It creates future problems for future people, and possibly the city. So, the remedy here is to modify the building code, in some fashion, to require an applicant prove he has legal access across the property. Now, that could be a right of entry. It could be, it could be a lease, I suppose, a license usually is only for 30 days. But this is a longer, could be an easement, it's planted, something of record, so that you, the city, at some future date can say, see, we've got the permission of the landowner for him to access across this private property, and we issued the permit accordingly. I don't, I don't see it as a big issue in the city, although there might come a time someday where somebody wants to build a house crossing city property. And if the city doesn't have a process in place to require that established legal access, you might find yourself in a tough position. So that's my point, just something on a rule change, if it's rules, or if it's actually an amendment to the codes, that requires the applicant to establish clear, unambiguous legal right to access the property for his permit. That's all I have.
Well, thank you. Go ahead, yeah.
So, this is am I on? This is, this is kind of a unique situation, in the fact that the property in question actually did have that access. Normally what happens is we review access through the subdivision process, and as long as a property has, is not landlocked, it has illegal access, and we do look at that very closely when we're going through the planning process. In this particular case, the, the property is located on private streets, on public streets, they actually have to have their, an approach permit issued, but on private streets, we do not, we do not issue the approach permit. We did review the, we did review the building, and this was way before my time. But we did review the building permit, we did have a site plan on it, it did show access from a driveway, if you actually looked at, scout, that driveway that already been constructed. So, but we aren't approving the approach, all we're approving is the building permit for the house, because the approach is from private access. There are several other lots in, that are also accessed by that driveway. Interesting to note, I think that there, I think that, if I remember correctly, there's five parcels that are accessed by that driveway, three of them had easements on the original plaque. The other two did not, but the driveway didn't be constructed anymore. So, again, this was a unique situation, because it is, because we're not approving the driveway. But the homeowners association does have to review the plans, and it does have to go through architectural review, the homeowners association however did. And so, not that that's our responsibility, because again, the access is via private streets or private easement, or in this case, private common open space.
And the common area is not city common area?
That is correct.
HRA common area, right?
And we do have a process for doing that in, on city property, for, for granting easements, be them, be they easements, be they right of way, be they, we have actually an area where we have a very large strip of right of way along Mission Avenue, where we actually have what we call revocable land leases for parking, so in front of the the Liberty Lake Community Theater, you'll see parking in front there, is actually on right of way, there's actually a couple businesses in that strip that have that revocable easement, so we do have processes for all of that. This was a failing, if, if, if I may respectfully say so, this was a shortcoming of the HOA and their architectural community.
I don't disagree with anything you've said, except for one thing. The, the access is provided off of the private road, two lots for access, only includes access with three lots. It does not include the subject law. The subject somehow got this driveway built on the common area, and that's, you know, that's, that's an issue between him and the association, I agree. My point here is, there is no legal, there's nothing on the record that says there's, there's no easement, there's no right of entry. I think, my person, based on my experience, it makes it much more clear for bankers, title companies, insurance people that provide title insurance, that there's a clear record and instrument providing that access. The access, what, I'm not begrudging the access, I'm just saying, the process, making it clear for all future owners, there should be some way for the city to say, you need to provide, probably should have permitted, you need to provide to us some, some mechanism that shows you have clear, unambiguous access to your lot.
For the record, they did have clear, unambiguous access from the private street, they chose not to do that.
That's correct. He chose to go into the red. Again, the issue here
But that's, and going back to the point, we don't permit that driveway, because they're not requesting an approach off of a public street.
And ask where these properties are?
Legacy Ridge.
Where?
Where, I, I can't remember, I believe it's Chief Gary, maybe?
I'm not
I'm not, I can't remember the street name, I, I looked at this, I, I did the research on this, probably three weeks ago, so I'm sorry, I don't remember which, which, which road it was, but it's an area where where it's near the top of the hill, and there are some topographic channels, shall we say.
Near Legacy Tree, or Legacy Ridge?
Yeah, it might, it might have been, been that area, yes.
Is this where the, the newer home is being built? Okay, or is this a whole?
No, it's not Legacy Ridge West, it is Legacy Ridge.
So, the HOA's architectural committee?
Yes, they have
Would have been the one
Yes.
Should have caught that.
Yes, and actually, they, they actually have to approve the approach, and also because the approach is from a private street.
So, but in essence, you're saying the city doesn't have jurisdiction here?
That's correct, it's private shopping.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to say that I was on, on the architectural committee, and now on the board for the Legacy Ridge Homeowners Association. So, it is obvious conflict, and I just wanted to go on the record with it.
That's fair.
Thank you.
I have a question. With architectural reviews, all HOAs do them, can you tell me what is expertise necessary on any HOA that can dictate, let me finish the question, that can help facilitate some of these issues where they know exactly what a requirement is? Um, you know, I I have to, I have to explain Yeah. Thank you, context, again. The HOA basically establishes CCNRs, the government, the government's codes and restrictions for that property. The CCNRs are a legal contract between the, all the property owners in that development. When you purchase your property, you agree to the terms of that. We have, we again, don't, we, the city, are not party to that agreement, so we have no responsibility, no enforcement, no anything about anything associated with the HOA and the CCNRs, presuming that they're not requiring something that is in violation of our, our code. So, would that mean that perhaps there's an opportunity for education and information on some of them, on some of these HOAs, of which all of us live in an HOA, probably that are here, that, just as a courtesy, on what some of these issues that may come up, so that should something like this occur again, and there's an inquiry, the, the people who are determining what happened, obviously, we heard today, someone did something they weren't supposed to do, but they did it anyway. How do HOA boards handle that, so that there is not? It's, it becomes a civil matter, and so, and so it's really, it's really a matter for the board to decide how to deal with that. Again, it's a board decision, if they choose to engage in education of community members. More than a few HOAs that, that the way the people find out the rules is they get a nasty grant about the fact that oh, you can't leave your, leave the yard waste container out in front of your yard, except on a garbage day. Well, not to belabor, not to belabor the issue, but again, the qualifying statement is, is there not room for education and information, ID, the city's engagement, community engagement commission may be able to engage HOAs on the Digi knows? Not to, not to do anything other than to educate and not, and eliminate some of the issues that may come forward, it is always an opportunity to educate. Regardless. I'm not gonna argue that there is not an opportunity to educate. Oh, good. What I'm going to, what I'm gonna say is, it's not the role of the city, however, we're not involved, we don't, we're not party to that civil
And, and the city may not be the experts on HOA requirements and, and law, I'm not sure the city has a, a group that oversees HOAs.
No, very, that is true.
Yeah.
However, I guess, let me be a little clearer here. We have a community engagement commission that is, was formulated, so they could entertain things such as this, anything, and everything that happens in the community. Not that the city governs it, but if there's ever an opportunity, it's like you folks on a particular architectural review committee may indeed be doing something contrary to what indeed is legal or, or could be questionable now. It doesn't mean that the city can take action if this occurs again. It just says, people are more aware, that are on these committees within their HOA, they're more aware, you know? I don't know if this could end up somewhere, of course, the city wouldn't be liable, they wouldn't be involved, it's a civil matter between the builder and the community, but, you know, if I look at the world this way, the glass isn't half full, nor is it half empty, it's a glass, it's got some liquid in it, that's how I look at it. If that liquid can spill out and do something adverse, then how do you protect that liquid from spilling out and doing harm? And it doesn't mean you have jurisdiction, it's just meaning you're saying, yeah, I, you know, I take my trash out at 4:00 a.m. because I know they come at 12:00. Versus the CCNRs, they have it out by Tuesday morning, it's just, it's just an opportunity. I, I, I appreciate that, but again, I, I would respectfully point out that we do not know the rules in each and every HOA. The rules change based upon actions by the board, we have no ability to, and frankly, we don't have the capacity. The only knowledge I have of CCNRs is that they actually are exist, are in existence, recorded and referenced in the plan. And they change multiple times thereafter. I don't track those, I don't find out about that, I don't, I just know that at the time that we're approving a plaque, that the CCNRs are in place, they've been reported, and they're actually, the homeowners association is actually registered with the secretary of state. So, it would be up to the HOA to say, hey, somebody go down to the city and, you know, ask a couple questions.
And the education The HOA's education comes from their attorneys, after all this CCNR stuff. And they choose not to use them, then they're doing a disservice to their homeowners, I think.
But they're not using them, an attorney in their architectural reviews, but
They have to. That's a word.
Very good, now we know. Great, great discussion. And, and this today's
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
I'm not sure of resolution, but thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Since we're on public comments. Yes, we do, so council member Seiler has asked me to do this note to all of you. Just a note of thanks to Chair Richard Seiler, the planning commission members, and the city staff, and the excellent job you all have done. Just a note of thanks to Chair Richard Seiler, the planning commission members and the city staff for the excellent job you all have done.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Please, that's your, now, see, guys, the workshop regarding RV and the storage.
By the way, thank you for putting this together in a way that I've not always helped it through trying to find where everybody is.
Oh, for the record, it's easy to do when it's only 14 acres.
Well, you went 14, so it's not a special 14 and 15.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. So we're moving on to the workshop regarding RV and the storage is limited use in certain zones. And, um, uh, just to kind of summarize what's in the packet. So as based upon our commission meeting in December, um, I heard, uh, the planning commission directing that the most appropriate zone in American Union was the C2 zone with Marshall. I have a map up there where you can see it is the red zones, um, that are all along the freeway. Trust to monitor the way it works. And, and again, in our previous workshops, um, we had identified several things that were important for the commission in terms of things to mitigate it through our design standards. Uh, they included maintenance. Um, I pointed out to you all that we actually do have maintenance code and that we have the ability to enforce against that. And that's what the commission's not on and we all just don't love it, but we do. And so we do have, we do have some rules as it relates to maintenance. But other concerns had to do with security, aesthetics and environmental considerations. And so based upon what I heard from all of you and I, and I took, uh, notes of meeting and then I actually listened to the tape again before I did this. And so this is what I came up with and I'm going to share with you what I came up with. And then, um, uh, Mr. Dell Stratten, um, has some comments and some thoughts to share with me. And he talked to me earlier and has some possible tweaks that he'd like to propose. So I, I would like to look at this and then we will turn it over to, um, Dell Stratten to share his thoughts on this. So recreational vehicle storage and self-service storage facility can be stored. Using the language that was up in the code that's not permitted at all across the board. Um, so storage facility shall be limited in size to maximum area of five acres. We did hear five to seven acres as the last news and looking at what we have in the city today. Um, the two many stores that we have are both under five acres. The one that's off of Harvard Road actually had an extension and that brought it to just like that here under five acres. Also, all stores shall be completely screened from view using buildings. Uh, and I have to move this, sorry. With exterior walls, um, meeting architectural design standards is detailed in paragraph K below. Now, the one thing I have to point out is that, um, in doing that, it's not allowing the breaks in the buildings. So we might want to think about allowing a person breaks in the building, which we have to address and other things. And what defensive material quality is, will you cite it, string or how you want that to appear? And I think, um, again, Mr. Stratten's prepared to speak on that, having built, uh, more than a few of those. Um, all stores should be covered by our roof. Again, the thought being that it keeps it organized, it keeps it clean working. And because of the topography, um, in the city, uh, folks that are at higher elevations may be looking down potentially on parts of this. And so that keeps it, it gives it a better perspective from a look up. All driving, parking and storage areas should be located on the curvy surface of the city. Um, spending under asphalt, uh, uh-huh, that sort of thing. All drains should be equipped with an oil water separator and that's addressing environmental concerns. Standalone outdoor storage shall not be permitted. Storage facilities shall be required to maintain 24-hour access control. Again, as we talked about, that's not meant to say that they have 24-hour access. They've got 24-hour access control, which means that only people who are supposed to access that facility can. Buildings should be set back a minimum of 20 feet from the edge of right of way. That's to allow for a landscape buffer. And a type two visual landscape, uh, buffer shall be required along all right of way from. And then, um, looking at the architectural design standard, so you skip, just avoid it, sorry. Entry space should be so designed as to be fully sighted screen. And I think, um, there's a concern about the way you put fences because they're mechanized. So it may not be possible to fully sighted screen and turn that over to, uh, let, um, Mr. Stratten share his comments. In terms of the architectural design standards that the building walls meet in need, outward facing exterior building walls shall incorporate architectural, um, detailing through use of varied materials and features in a manner that breaks up large surfaces and provides spacing and articulation. And then outward facing walls shall incorporate articulation and provide large masses to such techniques, including but not limited to building offsets, projections, modulation, recessed or projected entries, windows and panes. And then again, if you look at, I, I think that we see those architectural design standards incorporated in the images we provided you last time. One of the things you'll notice that, um, there are some breaks in all of these. That, and we're, they're maybe fencing and, um, swales or some sort of green space or something like that behind it. Um, but, um, I guess I'd ask if you have any questions? Yes?
Yeah, I have two questions. Uh, is there a limit on how tall, how many stories?
Um, so that would be dictated by the zone and I want to say that in that zone, I think it may be the height may- I'm not positive. And you can work out that the height may be as an in C2 zones, please. I want to see-
I just wanted to know if you have multi-levels.
You could potentially, because the height limits are the height limits. Unless you felt like you wanted to limit it to some of these stories.
Just, let's see what it, what it is right now. And then, uh, the other question is, what would be, what would be a standalone outdoor storage? What would that be?
So that would be like having somebody parking trailers and, um, vehicles and boats and everything else out in the open. Um, so not undercover, under, and while we said that it needs to cover, it's just reinforcing that. What you don't want to do is you don't want to have somebody who's got, um, storage behind a side of screen. It's just that, it's just open storage.
I kind of thought that's what it meant, but-
Yeah, again, it's trying to, trying to reinforce that idea that we want it all undercover.
Yeah. The, uh-
Are you thinking that it's been better defined?
Yeah. Well, I wasn't clear what it was to me, but maybe it's better combined. And yet, the other, it's not a question, it's a comment, but, uh, maybe what you can do is, this, a good part of this package is, is kind of, it's fixed. In other words, this is what it is for all, uh, zone B. Right, rather than, maybe you could ask, uh, your, or the, the committee to keep this along with the map so that you don't have to reprint it every time.
Oh, so I can do it with just the-
You know what I'm saying?
Being changed, but I want to-
No, I, I just think of, for, for all the, uh, committee members to have that part of the document along with the map that we could keep and you wouldn't have to reprint it every time or go through something like that.
Yeah, well, I, I can provide you with a link of it. I, but again, this is the red line version of the code of justice. And I, I do understand what you're saying.
I'm not talking about the documents, just-
The, the zone matrix, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and actually that's available online. We just actually codified all of the 20, 21 and 22 code and just got close. I'll send you all the, the fresh-
Perfect, okay.
70 feet unless it's adjacent to residential, then it's 40 feet.
70 unless it's adjacent to residential, then it's 40. So that, so that could be 70, probably four stories. Four stories. It could be that high. And you may want to limit that. You can, with a limited, you could say, no, we don't want it to be four stories.
You change it from C2 zone or we change it to RV stores?
No, I would, I would recommend that you do it specifically for this. It would be, um, this limited as a standard within the D2 standards. If that's what you, if you felt that was appropriate.
Well, all these rules strike me as, uh, going to the aesthetics concern that, that they're the same.
Aesthetics and security, you know, a little bit on the environmental, that's why we're requiring all the paving. Obviously, they always have the, there are stormwater regulations and those sorts of things that, that goes without saying. But having everything else on pavement and having all drains going to the oil water separator speaks to some of the concerns that I think, um, Mr. Man, Mr. Seiler and some others all brought out as being, you know, things that we, we wanted to make sure that we were-
Yeah, because we also have our landscaping standards for the C2 zone two on top of this.
Yes, absolutely.
This is the building.
Absolutely. And we're actually going a little bit farther on landscaping. So that type two visual relief, uh, buffer, that's, that, that's the, that's a 15 foot. Now, we actually are requiring 20 foot long frontage. But the standards would still apply in terms of plans. And that's one of our most intensive plans. Um, to, to make sure that we get the, uh, that we get the, um, kind of, uh, landscape buffer that, um, I think that I heard from all of you wanted to see.
How tall is the Market Street example that you had on the board just in the middle?
40 feet.
40 feet? 70 feet seems pretty tall. That's, and I would recommend, and, and is that two stories, three stories?
It's really three stories. Um, Market Street is there. What you, what, what 70 foot?
And if you can say you're being-
Yeah, Dell Stratten, uh, 25, uh, 25 023 East Applewood. Uh, on the 70 foot, the only time that would come into play is if somebody was going to do, um, inside storage, you know, uh, you know, you see like-
Yeah, storage.
You, you know, like heated storage type of situation, you know? In that case, you usually end up with an elevator. We don't have very many here in Spokane that are, uh, I don't know of any of them that are over three stories uh, because of the logistics and the, and the cost that you want. Not saying that it couldn't happen down the road, but one of the things I caution you to there is in a C2 zoning, if it's 70 feet, you, you could have manufacturing right next to you that's 70 feet. You could have, um, I believe office space that's 70 feet. So we would still have to adhere to the same exterior articulation that we're, we're speaking to here. So you would still have a nice building. I personally wouldn't do a 70 foot tall, uh, indoor storage facility. Uh, however, if somebody on one of those parcels decided to do it, it, it would be a, it, it would still have to adhere to the, the exterior modifications that she's proposed. And, and then that, it would just be like another office building really, uh, in, in that zoning, you know, which is already previously gone for. Is that kind of answer your question on that?
No question. Yeah, there's a storage facility, um, in post, or currently in between, uh, what is it, Northwest Exit and the 95 exit, right there? It's fairly tall, if you guys are thinking of it. You don't know how tall it can be?
I, I don't, I don't really know that facility. My best guess is, you know, it would be less than four, uh, four, four stories.
I believe it's, because you can like see the locker room inside, I'm pretty sure it's three stories. If my, my mental, uh, if my memory is correct.
If you would even want to be tall.
And I think, you know, just the logistics of trying to rid that up. I mean, yeah, you have an elevator in there and you have cars, but it's still, uh, it, it would be. They do them in large cities, uh, you know, I know when you-
They're over in Seattle.
In Seattle, I know Boston, they, 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 I've seen pictures of some that they've done over there that are, you know, 10 stories tall, that you're dealing with a different. Uh, you, you don't have the room over there to, so that everything does go up. Uh, which once again fits right into the rest of their zoning as far as I know.
Yeah, Tom.
I just need some clarification as to the word articulation. I know what it means in medicine with relation to bones, but I don't know what it means here.
So you can, articulation is, um, creating some visual separation, breaking the large masses. You can do it with like bump outs of the building. You can do it with color. So, or changing materials. So you can, you can change your materials in a way that it breaks up that building. You can use windows, um, add windows, et cetera. And the whole point is to give it some visual interest.
Understood. Thank you for the clarification. Yeah.
If you look at the pictures that we had had from the last meeting on Market Street there, um, you'll see that those awnings coming out and the windows going down. It's really a false front is, is what we did there. Um, you, you know, we're right on a main arterial right there. There's a sidewalk. And so in, in order to break that building up, we, we added some, uh, awnings and then the windows, you know, that look as if you're looking inside of an office building. And then behind that false wall is where storage starts.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
Once you get inside that building, is it, uh, roofed all the way?
Oh, yeah.
It is?
Yeah. That particular one there does not offer, I didn't, uh, we didn't do any, uh, outdoor storage in that particular facility just because it just didn't flow and it wasn't something we, uh, found as a need in that area. Mostly was, you know, covered indoor storage, secure. You know, so the other one from Airway Heights, that one has quite a bit of, uh, covered, like RV parking or that type of thing.
That brings me to a couple of comments. I, uh, it, the, all the storage should be covered by roof. Being, that seems to be a little bit expensive, it, it, or storage, so to me. I, I, I don't see a real problem with open air storage for RVs. Personally, uh, I don't understand. I, I think it would make it become much more costly if we required the entire storage facility to have a roof. Um, that's one thing. Um, the, the item G, giving 24-hour access. I know you said access control, but it sounds like they're going to have to give the, their patrons 24-hour access. Uh, and I've used several story facilities over the years and never been 24-hour access. They, they have operating hours from which you have access. And I, I understand what you're trying to get at. I think you're talking about security here.
It's, it's, it's access control. And maybe we don't even have to say 24 hours, just that's the access.
Access control. I think, if taking the 24 hours out, I think would, it just seems like what it's saying is they're going to be required to give 24-hour access.
Maybe we could round the clock access control because that's what we're saying is that we, you don't have any hours in the heat stroke.
Right, exactly.
Does that make it clear, saying it that way?
Or it's just saying secure access control. Seems to me, just as long as it's secure and people, I mean, each person is given a code, they get in and that kind of thing.
And it says the gates have never opened.
Yeah, most, most facilities, the gates never are open. No, they're only open by an access code in, in the newer facility. You still have some older facilities where, you know, they're still under a locking key and they open them up at a certain hour. But just for the sheer sake of security, the gates are always closed. And it's a keypad entry system, you know, that you're assigned when you, when you lease out a, a, a unit. And then you have access. Now, sometimes we would control the access, the hours would be maybe six in the morning until 10 at night or, because the other thing that goes into these is, you know, we go in and we do a photometric print so that we can go through. And we put, uh, lighting, that, that's not to be shining up in the air, but to be shining down into the drive aisles. It, it acts as two things. Number one, it gives people that do come this time- I- i- it acts as two things, number one, it gives people that do come this time of year when it gets dark at four o'clock. You could still back a, a trailer in, cause you have at least some light around. The other thing it does is it gives us security, you know, once, we all know, you know, people don't like the, the light when they're trying to break into something. And so we typically try to. To set the, the lighting up so that it, you know, onto the drive aisles. One shines across to the other opening, vice versa, so that you can get some light through there. That light's usually, in our case, it's always been projected downward, so you're not getting light out onto. neighboring properties, that type of thing.
So, 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 like, we could include a provision that, um, that they provide lighting for security. Um, consistent with the city's lighting standards, you do that.
You, you probably have, uh, and I haven't gone completely through the C two. But you probably have lighting requirements in the, for parking lots and that type of thing, which would cross over. Really, in a sense, it would cross over into what we're doing here.
Number of parking spaces, is that, uh?
That's defined in our development.
And if I was to say multi-story, in other words, if it was a four story.
If space upon number, it's so many parking spaces per x number.
One last comment on the entrance gate shall be designed to be fully sighted, security, I'm not sure that's necessary. Uh, I, I think about, uh, go by the RV part that's there on Appleway, and you can't even see in there, they never have a gate. I mean, it's totally open all the time, and I'm not sure it would matter. And that's another pretty expensive thing to do, about a, a sighted security gate. It has to be open and closed periodically, uh, that's pretty expensive thing to do, again, trying to be a little business friendly here. Um, and I, I mean, storage facilities, you're. They keep building them, because people keep using them. I think it's important, we try to make it as business friendly as we can and yet fit in with. The ambiance and the architecture of the city.
Have a question on the Airway Heights, is that covered?
So there, there is inside of that. On the exterior is all of, um, she comes up, on the, on the exterior, i- it's. I- it's all enclosed units on the exterior all the way around, inside of that. There is a, a complete row of just covered RV parking, it doesn't have walls and sides, it just has a roof. Mainly to keep snow, rain, that type of thing off of people's.
But I'm gonna go back to some of the comments from the last time, which had to do, uh, uh, we're looking at aesthetics. Um, I agree with Joe, putting a roof over everything is gonna be expensive, but requiring covering. I don't think that that is unreasonable last. Because I think it's probably good business since anyway, somebody has a hundred thousand dollar RV.
Y- you know, most, it, it, depending on the size of the facility. Most of them that I've done, I do cover regardless.
Okay.
Because i- it's just people want the, out of the weather, you know, anybody can go park it in a field. Now, if you had a sixteen acre storage facility, you might offer a portion of that, that was just outside open storage for.
Are not doing sixteen acres.
But we're not, it, it's, that, this is my point, cause that was, one of the things that I wanted to address you guys on today. Was, I saw the five, and, and I had originally said five to seven when we were in here, at the last one. But some, uh, s- some of the stipulations that we have here are gonna eat up land. Uh, you know, a twenty foot buffer for your landscaping. The, these, these buildings to, to, to build them so that it's kind of an enclosed compound, if you will. We lose space when we're doing that. Uh, I, I went back and I, I looked at, I, I've been involved in, I think, six of them at this point, and, and I. Done a lot of work across the years on storage, and I started looking at the average size that we, we had built. Airway Heights isn't an anomaly, it's sixteen acres. Uh, it, it's a massive storage facility, it's really the outlier group. Uh, there's a few in town that are eight to ten acres. Uh, not very many, but a few. Most of them fall between that five and seven range, given the fact that we're gonna ask for, you know. Extra footage, y- you know, for green space and that, which I agree with. I, I think it would. Be beneficial to go at least a seven acres. You, you know, it, it would allow you to do interior covered RV parking, that type of thing. Most of these I'll start out with, it'll be three and a half acres, it's usually about what I'll start with when I come in. If it goes like it probably will out here, the second base of that is usually another three and a half acres. It just doesn't seem to fit on three acres, uh, when you're building to this degree. You look at the storage units you already have that, that you guys have. They're your typical ten by twenty, uh, you know, row, you know, row of, of, of storage units. Uh, what you're looking at here, a lot of these are, you know, fourteen foot wide, sixteen foot wide, by thirty foot B, by forty foot B. That, they're bigger units, because when you do your homework in this area, there's a lot of RVs, there's a lot of boats, that's what people. Really are trying to store, we can't store them in our driveways because of HOAs and, and I, we don't have them on streets. So we're trying to offer them, uh, the ability to have full enclosed storage for those. Boats and RVs that they want, some people just want extra space for toys or, or, you know, hobbies, whatever. Uh, but they're, they're kind of a bigger unit, and when you put the money into the. Into the design of these buildings, y- you know, you, they, they end up being bigger units, and so. I, I would ask that we kind of look at that and, and maybe, if, you know, if you think about bumping it somewhere between six and eight. Acres as a max, I mean.
You started out with seven.
Oh, well, I, 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 for me, I'm not going any more than seven. I, I, I really am gonna end up six and a half, probably, is where I had always imagined, six and a half. Uh, to seven, uh, but, I, I mean, when you, when you look at that overall investment for what. What we're asking for here in this jurisdiction, which will be a nice building, it'll fit in with what's already over. Along Appleway in the office buildings, they won't look like. Junkyards, they won't look like ten storage facilities, you know, that are sheet metal so, storage facilities that you drive by, and all you see is. You know, garage doors and, and corrugated, you know, these, these go a little above and beyond.
So, so two questions, one, I wanna follow up on the question that I had earlier on, this one, are you suggesting. Seven would be better than five, and would seven be adequate?
Yes, seven would be adequate.
Second question, is it cost prohibitive to? Because I think roofing in this conjures up a permanent roof.
Yeah.
But is it going to be detrimental or cost prohibitive to require covered? Covered, not a roof, but just covered, so RV, RV, any? Am I trying to word it, is it any exterior?
I struggled with, I struggled with that, I started out with the cover, but I'm like, well, somebody's gonna say, turn this off, it's covered, and that's not.
Are, are you talking about enclosing the outdoor storage, like having three sides enclosed with a roof, or are you talking just a roof?
Well, that's, that's, I guess, that's the question.
So.
I think Joe made a good point, which would be a permanent roof is gonna be pretty cost, could be cost prohibitive.
Y- y- you know, the only way to really, uh, enclose it. It would be more cost prohibitive to have to enclose three sides of it, say, you know. Y- i- i- if it was open air with a roof above, yes, they are. Uh, they, they do start to get up there in the dollar amount, it is kind of, it's not cost prohibitive, it just. It, it does cost quite a bit, but. That is way better than having to close off three sides of it, uh, you know, or, and I know. We had spoke, Lisa and I, at one point about that, and, you know, that just brings up a whole lot of extra issues, if you can imagine having a. A covered storage in the middle of the facility and you could enter it on both ends. Okay, you could, you could go back to back with stalls. That helps pay for the cover over top, now if I had to enclose three sides of that so that it couldn't be seen from. From a helicopter up above or somebody up on the hill. Now you've lost that ability to, to do back to back stalls, and yes, that becomes.
Right.
Pretty.
Those back to back stalls are covered.
Correct, they, they have a roof over top of them.
And I think that that's what I would. What would like to see, and maybe clearing up the roofing, because of my son, the thing I was thinking. More of a permanent structure, almost like a, a indoor.
Well, let me just, let me just be clear. Your code will require it. To be a forty pound snow load regardless, so, uh, cover's a cover, it's a cover, it's gonna have to be forty pounds snow load. And therefore, we are talking, we don't have, we don't necessarily have any design standards for that, I think it has to be.
So that's one thing I wanna mention, I, I see where Joe's going with expense, uh, what I wanna avoid is what we have on Mission now. In terms of the gate, the metal gate there, it's ten feet or five feet from the road, I got blue tarps blowing everywhere. It is, it's horrible, so enforcing people, sorry, uh, if that's your blue tart, my apologies. Sorry, I don't think you hear me now, but, um, so I'm in favor of having a wall there. I don't think we need to require, uh, uh, anything around it, uh, the certain forest tree size scale, but I do believe that the ends. Need to be fenced off or walled off with a cover over the top, I worry about the views, we have some topography issues here with our C two zone here, the east. And I don't wanna see it when we're driving down the road, if it's behind walls, in the middle of the facility like Airway Heights is, that's great. If it's a wall off the ends, have a roof over the top, back to back, I'm golden with that, however, if we do. Uh, flex on the minimum size of what, the six to eight or seven to ten, or whatever we're gonna go to, um, I don't want to. Back off of the architectural standards as far as the landscaping goes. Uh, I can't see doing both, I mean, it's either one or the other, but, uh, I really wanna maintain a look of this, and if it's gonna be a higher end storage facility, that's what we got.
Yes, so I have one suggestion, and, 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 and just what I'm hearing you say. Um, we could have all storage, uh, shall be completely screened from. I'm looking at the all storage should be completely screened from view using, um. Buildings or exterior walls meeting architectural design standards. Or will be sighted screwing fencing or walls, but it's got, but because we're talking five or six acres or seven acres. It's gonna be a big, it's gonna be a big fence, and you're still gonna want to have that articulation, and, and it's gotta be tall enough, not sitting over.
Right, I'm good with that, so.
And, y- you know, we talked earlier about, well, that upper picture shows it right there, where a lot of times you have swales, that type of thing that have to be. Now, they didn't require type two around that over there. You know, that landscaping can help with that, with that buffer. Uh, one of the, on, on, letter B on the. On the proposal there, where it says all storage shall be completely screened from view using building. With exterior walls meeting architectural design standards. You know, I kept looking at that, and I think, I think what I'm hearing here, and it's something I was gonna bring up, is. I think that's all open storage, we, we, we don't wanna see open storage, like you're talking about the blue tart blowing around, cause you can look through. If, if you could look back to that, uh, Market Street, and, and it has a good picture of the entry, but. Yeah, so, if you look on the picture on the right there, you know, you're, you're looking into, from the road, you, you see. Gates immediately to the left there on that. And when you look in, there's no open storage, it's all buildings, i- i- it's all fully covered, finished. There's no outside storage, so there's no way to have blowing tarps or. Uh, RV sitting there, y- you know, the idea would be to keep all of that in, and so when I looked at that on, on letter B. Instead of saying all storage shall be, this storage could be the buildings themselves, you know, we could be. Uh, you know, that's, when I read that, I think, well, we're saying that all the buildings have to be. Sight obscuring, and I, I think that that kind of goes against what we've done in the architectural part of it. I would think that we would change that to all open storage shall be totally screened or. Block.
That seems that we're allowing open storage.
If, if, if that's, you know, I would put it in there anyways, just in the simple fact. Y- you can always write out the open storage like we've talked about. But it just keeps people from saying, oh, I'm gonna park a car right here, or I'm gonna, you know, it, it just gives it a way to enforce it, my.
You could actually say all storage and parking should be. And even that, I'm not sure that it's one way. You're gonna wanna have, as you can see in this picture here, your access has to be set back from the street. Particularly when you're hauling something on a, uh, trailer or something.
Lisa, quick question, does this cover? Uh, the freeway side of the complex too?
Yes.
Okay, this one double check, since it's not our.
So that's both sides. And the type two landscaping, by the way, is already required on the freeway side, that's what you're saying, you wanna see it on the, on a public street side also.
So I, I have a couple of comments, uh. But, and I think it goes mine here, I have written down our walls for this screening, as you use buildings or walls to screen. So that you don't have to have buildings necessarily in terms of if a fence works, that could be a solid fence. That has articulation, has, I think that's what I see out of Airway Heights, part of that is. Is buildings, but part of it is also just a standing wall that.
It's all, it's all buildings behind that standing wall.
Is it?
Yeah.
But it, it needs to at least, I think, especially on our frontage roads and stuff, it has to be sighted, you know, I, I get the gate thing. Uh, I also, this doesn't talk about a height. Do we wanna talk about a height, I, I don't know what that number is, but I believe that number is not six feet. I believe that number is the ten foot area, in my, in my opinion, and what we see in. And most of what is shown to us, there is a height minimum that is obscures the. The, the rows, I'm gonna call it, I mean, when you go along Mission, you just see rows of. Of, uh, storage areas, there's no obscuring at all, and so. So how do I obscure that, a six foot wall is not gonna obscure that.
And I'm not sure.
Wall would.
I'm not sure about Liberty Lake's code, but most codes don't allow over six foot, um, in certain commercial areas, they can go to eight. Correct, and the problem with sight obscuring fences or enclosures. If they're gonna use those, is that you really, with the wind we get out through here and that, they, they really don't lie, you, you. Become more problematic than. Doing this, you know.
So, so building it with the buildings is.
It's really, and, and the other way is, you know, that we've found that works is with the type two. Uh, landscaping, and, you know, one thing I, I've seen in other jurisdictions is, um. You know, we're not gonna allow chain link and chain link and slats, and that really takes. A lot of the aesthetic out of our, our, you know, out of people's argument that, well, it doesn't look nice. Uh, with the screening, you know, you can screen a plant material behind, you know, say, uh, ornamental iron fence. You know, to where you, you have that nice look that we're all going for.
I, I, I was just gonna say, I was thinking about that, what we could do is we could require ornamental fence with every new screening. Again, the evergreen screening provides for that, uh, really around, um, visual screen. As a requirement, as a requirement.
I think that's a fine suggestion.
Yeah, cause I think that's what we're trying to achieve. The visual aspects of the thing, not the end, but we see when we drive along Mission, I mean, that's, and my new car does look nice, right? And the, the other, the other one, oh, go ahead.
I, I really think with what you guys have come up here, I mean, I've done this in lots of jurisdictions. You're gonna have a nicer looking facility than you do as you drive further down towards the, the west, and with RVs and, and the. You know, when you look out there, I mean, uh, Rubens Building is a very nice looking building. Uh Rubeens building is a very nice looking building from freeway side. From, but when you start looking at it as a whole, there's still cars out there. There's still things we see from up above. Um that's kind of the nature of. Business role, if you will. I think as we've talked here the last few time. We we want some plot put into the landscape. We want some, we want something that articulates that this isn't. A a junkyard. This is a business. This is a community and and we can. Achieve that with the landscaping she's proposed with, you know, I mean, I'm not against saying no chain ring fence, you know. I mean. Does it, does it already say that? Okay, I, some jurisdictions do in some kind of.
And actually, when we say fully side obscuring, if if you go to definition section. And it shows you what's not fully side obscuring, it's a change. That might be fully.
One other, one other comment I have on here are, this doesn't say anything about. Folks renting a space and operating the business out of that space.
Oh, that's. So 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 just for the record. It's hard to use a non-occupiable space. I'll never get a losing response since um Amy, Amy lips that in a single time.
But I I understand that. I also. I al- I'm also not, I just woke up yesterday cuz I I see in storage units where people.
They store business material in there.
They source business material. I'm not against that. It's when you start doing. Business assembly of parts or you start doing, it may not be a. A storefront, if you will, but it becomes a. Manufacturing facility, I'm going to say maybe a light manufacturing facility. Uh I wouldn't mind our code prohibiting that. And I and I think most storage facility owners would like that.
We control that by how much power we give each unit. Uh most of them, most of them.
One circuit.
Yeah, and a lot of them don't even give one circuit. They give a lot of shit. Some of them, some of them don't even get light. They have the door that rolls up.
But you control that, not us.
Correct.
And I think us are the control, not relying on you to control.
Sure, I.
So, so I think we we need something in there that talks about.
Now, I've.
Operating out of these places with, and I don't know all the right words and what kinds of things, but.
Yeah. One thing I've cautioned there, one thing I've seen used a lot for through the years, a lot of them throughout the the city and and the county. Is landscapers. Now, they're not operating, they're storing. They store their, they store their equipment, but they meet there in the morning, you know, they grab their trailer out of their unit. And off they go, uh they're not, you you know, now, a- anybody could. Work on their weed eater in in a in a storage unit and act like, you know, treat it like it's their garage. I think what you're trying to limit are the guys that are. Fully manufacturing stuff out of there, assembling things and selling them off the door and that.
Right, or or maybe somebody has a a business where he makes wooden X Y Zs for the hardware market. And he was doing it all out there with his table saw and everything going, that type of a thing, you know, I. I, yeah, I don't wanna prohibit businesses using it for what they need for storage of their their stuffs. I just don't want it to become the.
To be a warehouse.
Well, just for the record.
Yeah, I would want, I would want to to have uh. This be a commercial storage. It's it's private individual storage, isn't it?
Well, well, you you, again, it's not something that that, that's not something that we can regulate from developing. That, you know.
The use.
Who who that, we can, we can limit it to storage, but we can't say, oh, only residential storage. It's unenforceable. It's an unenforceable and and I and I know that those of you who've been on this mission for a while, when we say this. Uh so the cows come home. We should not cast the ordinance that we cannot enforce.
I have some kind of broader questions. It's a good time.
Go ahead.
Uh this is kind of a good case, use case for just uh how city evaluates, not just individual businesses or business types, but. Uh industries themselves. Uh and I think one thing I haven't heard, maybe you guys have discussed this before, but is there any sense of? Uh what, we got twenty four sort of business types here. We spent a lot of time. On just one, we call it eight people. Uh like if half an hour, that's four hours, um plus gentleman visited, four hours talking about designing the perfect. Storage facility, great. Um I'm, I have not heard about the uh the city's interest as far as. How much revenue it can take from these businesses towards city services. Uh the benefit of having a commercial C two is, oh, it's out of sight. But to me, the aesthetic concerns should be very low. I mean, no one's living next to these, that's why the zone is there. Um and so these, to me, that zone should be the zone that pays the bills of the city. That's the primary concern of anything in that zone. Um so my, I haven't heard anything that now we got to discuss this. I'm I'm more, I'm more interested in. Uh what services can be enabled because of this? And like, there are all these, there are minuses, but facilities. Uh providing landscaping and it's uh parking is a net loss on revenue that that is making. Um if we're making people. Feel unnecessary parking, that hurts the city. So those things are actually like hurting the city, could be in these, in these uh. These bullet points. So I, I, that's an open question, not just for this particular discussion, but more broadly enough. Is the city hoping to attract uh storage facilities more broadly? And do we have a calculus for? Uh how much is it going to exceed the cost of maintaining those businesses over time?
So let me, let let me take a stab at that and kind of provide.
It's a long discussion, it's not like this one, but.
So first of all, um I wanna talk about just generally why we're here. We're here because there has been some demand for this. And.
Sure, it's a public service, it's like.
Our HOAs do not allow their residents to store their.
Right.
And um so so this is, there is some demand for it. One of the things I would say from the service perspective, so we are the. Parking required for mini storage is much less. It's a much lower trip generator than almost any use here. So it's gonna have much more limited impact on our transportation infrastructure. One of the things that. Mini storage um in terms of the services that the city provides. Is going to use significantly less than most other uses. Um so there's that aspect, um. You're right, it's it's not. It's not adding to our. Gross city product, if you will, are are are, it's not what we produce. I will say the aesthetics are important on the I ninety corridor because that is our, that is our front window. And oh, by the way, Apple Way is a pretty significant corridor also, so the aesthetics. Are defining for the community. Um again, I think that we try and. Balance.
Which this is fine.
We try and balance the aesthetics with the business case and I and I think we have a lot of business people on the funding mission. Really take to heart the fact that we don't want over, over regulate. Many uses, many other uses, and we've been through, we've been through many, many workshops. Many of the uses have already been defined and established. We've spent a lot of time on the landscape or the designs, standards and other areas. Because this is not allowed right now. It's worthwhile, but we spend a little time and make sure that if we're going to allow it, we allow it in a way that is. Acceptable to our residents and businesses. Um and that's, and and is consistent. With the image that the city um has for itself.
Sure, I'm almost hearing that, that's, I'm starting to get against having zones, though.
I'm sorry.
It all needs to be aesthetically pleasing as though someone lived there, but the zones aren't necessarily as valuable.
So one thing, I was gonna say, they live across the street from us. So so there is, every, well. Every zone has a adjacent zone.
Right.
And so that's what we're trying to protect a little bit here too, is that adjacent zone visual, what they get to see. Uh and 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 of course, I think the bigger thing is we want our city to have a. A look that is a little nicer than miles and miles of cyclone fences and rows of storage facilities. You know, that's something. We really want Liberty Lake to look like. It's not a matter of.
It's a general interest.
Uh uh let's, I I mean, we don't, well, we don't want to liberate, I think, and that's one thing, we're fortunate. We have freeway. Commercial along our major roads that come across when you drive by Liberty Lake. There's lots of freeways that go right through residential areas and that's no fun either, right? So. So I, you're right, it's it's still a visual of what is Liberty Lake and that's, we kind of, I think we wanna keep that in each too. But there is also the residential zone right across the street from, from one of these, especially there on Apple Way, so.
Well, to that point, just even with the uh figure was here, like say, you say a storage business could generate more revenue for the city. An increase of seven feet, just imagine. Say a hundred feet, you actually would have generate more tax revenue. We could, you know, plow more streets. Uh I would say we should do that. Make it look nice, whatever, but I'm I'm not seeing that balance here, I guess, yet.
And and I think that Mr. Stratton made a really good point that.
Was this a true, any of this is not just like.
Yes, certainly limit the height if that is a concern for people. I think the balance is that. Office buildings that could be built right next to it that are of the, and it's will be.
Well, that's more than ridiculous, right? I, my general point is, like, how much is it gonna benefit? Someone will never reuse that, will never see it, who lives. By the lake, you know.
Well, we don't care about somebody who lives by the lake, because they're not a member.
Well, this is a general point, it's all.
And I, and I think I can see exactly where you're coming from. I think that everybody on this, at least from my perspective, wants to be very business friendly. And very tax friendly.
Every word is a cost to business, so.
We can have a reasonable expectation what it'll look like, because unfortunately. The developers that wanna commit here and put in a storage facility are having to live with the stigma of. Storage facility devolving their entire lives in cyclone fashion or pressures on.
That's industry wide.
That's industry wide, but it's not, we have the ability to go to change that here. I think that's the.
Mr. Stratton made the point on the seventy feet that we can limit it, but the reality or not. The reality is it's unlikely that people would build that, they're compatible uses. What we have shown is that clearly there's enough demand and there's not enough of a business case that people are willing to build. Um storage units um using these kind of architectural design standards and in fact. Mr. Stratton has built a number of them. And so I I, I think that on. There was a thought process probably starting in the eighties. That we had a little bit of a remand. Storage units were the cash cow, cuz it didn't cost a lot to throw them up and it's just been generating money. And um and I'm gonna say this, I know for a fact that some of the real estate magnets. Over in Quarter Lane got their start. Uh and built their own, not off the storage.
And I don't think we're out of line with standards in today's visuals. I think, I I mean, these, these are. Are built places on Airway Heights, on areas that can use that standard and aesthetics. And so I think we're are in line with what. What the builders are willing to go do and what we want the each of the city on. Airway Heights has been an eyesore. Many times in some of its areas and they're cleaning it up and and they're putting these in to help that aesthetics out there. And I, I think it's a great thing for if you maybe do have these controls in here.
I have a quick question. Uh since we can't, I think it sounds impractical that I would ask for a fence higher than maybe a six foot fence. Requiring a decorative iron with some evergreen behind, I think is a great solution, but would it be feasible to limit the total lineage foot? Of the property on frontage roads by, you know, you can't have more than, I don't know, twelve percent, fifteen, I don't know. Twenty five percent, whatever it is, so we don't have too much of that fence. We're gonna put more buildings on that side, does that make sense?
Uh I think, I think that it does, particularly along right boy frontage.
Right, it's all I'm thinking about.
So so I can take a look at, I can do a little bit of restriction, take a look at what. What we're looking at in other communities and come up with a sneaker, but I would think it would be less than twenty five percent, but. Twenty five percent of the frontage um that would be fencing and 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 it may be even less than that.
And therefore, I mean, not on the front of the side, but the other side may have more decorative wrought iron, but that is what it is.
Right, right, exactly.
Do you? Obviously, you've got some idea of what you wanna build.
Yes.
Is it going to have open air storage?
I would like to, yes. It would, it would, it would have covered open air.
Covered open air.
You know, uh. If I closed it off, it would be only because part of the open air would.
Right.
Would be to the perimeter so that I would. Do, it would look like, you would, you would drive by, you'd see a wall like you're seeing on the right hand side here, that looks like. Offices, whatever, but on the inside of that, I would have shed roof. Now it'd be taller than that if I was. Doing it, you know, if I was gonna do that, but. That's only if I have to back it up to the perimeter of the. You know, most of the time I try to keep it to the interior cuz you can do two. Two aisles around it with fully enclosed units on each side with that in the middle and now you can get double sided access.
So so another way to put that on your bullet points would be any open air. Open air storage must be covered, must be side obscured.
She added, it already says nasty of a roof. Standalone outdoor storage, oops, one of these says nasty.
It has some roof, I think.
Yeah, all storage shall have be covered by a roof. That doesn't mean it has to have walls, it just has to cover.
Right, okay.
Is that with the with the open air?
Well, again, again, there was some question, I I keep going back, we've covered a lot of ground.
I was gonna suggest that maybe I I do my table reports and then you guys can add anything that I might be using. Or anything that else that you think needs to be changed.
Yeah, can you read your writing?
Well, you know what? That's the sad thing. I actually can.
One, one quick point before we go further than that, and this may be a question better before the city council. But is this the highest and best use of this land? The, and it goes back to what Timbal was talking about earlier, tax revenue. Value to the city. That may be something for the city council to consider.
I think that's a fair question, but I want you to remember that this was referred to once by the mayor.
By the mayor.
I understand, I understand.
So that is a fair question to ask, though.
Sure.
Um. All that being said, this is what I got, and you go through this, the storage facility shall be rooted inside the maximum area of seven acres. Um that's um. Storage uh shall be completely screened from view using buildings or buildings. Or walls with exterior walls meeting architectural design standards as detailed in paragraph below. Um we would um or um decorative. Tired fencing uh with uh will be permitted um with um evergreen screening. With uh but limiting a certain percentage, which is gonna be something of twenty five percent or less along right boy frontages. Um. I need standalone outdoor storage shall not be permitted or we just use that altogether, because we already said it has been undercover. So maybe that's the easier way to do it, cuz I think that's um. Storage facility shall re- shall be required to maintain secure access control. Um we're gonna um. We're going to eliminate paragraph H altogether unless somebody has a suggestion or have a change that. We could, I think states shall be designed, designed as to be um partially side obscuring.
Semi side obscuring.
Semi side obscuring.
Uh I would say, i- if it was me, I would say uh ornamental iron gates. Uh to keep people from putting chain link, you know, here we've gone to all this trouble to design these and now somebody puts a chain. somebody puts a chain ring gate up, you know, that draws back and forth, it would kind of take away from what we've done.
And against that would be obscure, they would be.
They would be semi obscured. You you know, they would be picketed. Usually there's some sort of logo design in the middle there. What happens when you do a gate fully side obscured is it becomes so heavy that you, you, your, your controls for it, we'd like to think they're gonna last for a few years, but they don't. Uh, it's just so much weight, you know, or ta- you know, pulling it, you know, opening and closing that type of thing. You know, there's three main kinds, you, you're, you're, you're gates that swing in or out.
Right.
Your, your gate that retracts to one side or the other. Now we have gates that actually live and come, come straight up. What's that?
What data are you thinking about?
It, it's gonna depend. They're gonna be an ornamental iron gate. I, I like, I like the slide gates.
Yes.
Um, is what I like. Um, now there's certain circumstances where you don't have room for a slide. That's where the lift comes in, so it's just, it's gonna really depend on the final design. One thing I wanted to say, and I'm not sure city of Liberty Lake, but, you know, in, in most jurisdictions, you know, there's, there's a design review or, you know, which would give the city the opportunity to look at this and to sign off before we get too far into the weeds as we're designing these things. Uh, and, and it would be nice to have some discretion at the city level.
Ooh.
You, you know, the, the director of planning sheet knows what we're trying to achieve because as, as we start narrowing this in, you, you know, there's, there's ten different circumstances that could change how many feet of uh, ornamental, uh, fencing and, and evergreen screening that you have, you, you know, to break that up. Uh, depending on lock, size, configuration, where I think sometimes giving it to a, to a design review for them to okay ahead of time. You know, or have a conversation with the developer.
We, we have, we have designed, we encouraged early on, and, um, and, uh, so, so that's we've already got that covered, this will probably be subject to that.
And so, and then that would give the city some, some latitude to help direct it a little bit, if that makes sense.
That was just funny, the front of the city, they're going to want to come back.
Absolutely. I don't want to do this two or three times, I think, you know.
On our code sheet also have some, some parameters of what we want that design to look like, so we gotta, we gotta still document.
Sure.
What we want, it's not cut green for all. It helps you, it helps us, so.
Sure.
So I had two last items that I, so we went back and forth on time. I didn't hear anybody say that they felt like we shouldn't want them to hike. Is that true?
I didn't hear anybody say we shouldn't hike.
What, did we talk about building height bill?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
All right, and then the last one is that, um, well, you can somehow, which, um, I will make it pretty hard to do this, but uh, the, the, you, you should reduce for storage only, no manual manufacturing, you know, or some.
Or retail, I mean, that means, uh, that'll get so.
By the way, we have a lot of those, we do have a lot of those units elsewhere. That's what the Kenzie Business Conference is about.
But, right.
You know. Well, yeah, but I, but I was picking up a trailer at one, uh, storage unit at, at the mall. And, uh, and it was just advertising, you need a mattress, you know, call us up, we'll meet you at the storage center.
Yeah.
I see if, if we may.
Would it just?
So it said manufacturer, that would say commercial.
So. If we say commercial activity though, it will sound like you're limiting people from using commercials, doing commercial storage there. And that's not, and that's not what we're trying to limit, or is it anything?
For the storage and activity, if I'm the landscaper and I'm parking my trailer near the seven activities, that's a commercial activity. He's just finding the piece of story.
Well, I would, to that point, if the, um, the aesthetics are such that the overall cost becomes uh, a cost that he has to pass along to his customers. If the aesthetics are done properly, a landscaper is going to be able to look for the rest.
Well.
You understand, well, in other words, there's, if, if.
There's cheaper facilities.
To a certain extent, the customer base is going to use the facility.
If he has that thirty foot long, fourteen foot wide storage facility, the landscaper may say that's how they that costs, so. Yeah, and we don't control that either. That's not one of the control.
You know, inside of, if, if we do this proper, you're not going to be seen in there, in which case we're gonna have to police it or whoever does it is gonna have to police that, which we do because we don't want manufacturing. Now, I don't care that, you know, Joe homeowner, you know, goes over there to fiddle around with something, you know, and uses it as his second garage to get away from the house per an hour, you know. I mean, that's gonna happen, that's kind of what the purpose of it is. What you don't want is somebody uh, running an active business out of there, advertising, selling, nor do we want that. Because only the people that have units have access to that gate. So we don't want those codes going out, you know, we'll have people at the facility, you know, and most of them do, all of these do. Um, to prevent things like that.
So with that, I think I have some great direction. I think we probably need to have one more workshop, um, hopefully a short one. Um, we'll have a reschedule hearing, um, and, uh.
For your special event. Okay.
Thank you so much, Joe.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you. If, if, just you guys were discussing HOAs earlier, I've done quite a few HOAs through the years, developed them with attorneys. Every HOA is different. Um, I know that we would write into our HOAs that common space was not to be used as driveway driven across, I mean, we had a whole list of things. But each one is different and there's really no way to inform uh, people about it. At the time of purchase, they're all, they're all to be told that they're part of an HOA, they know they have dues and they're to be given CC and Hards. Problem is, most people don't read them.
They don't, they don't follow due, they don't.
Exactly. And the only time they pick them up is if they don't like what the neighbor's doing, then they pick up the CC and Hards to see if it's something they're violating to stop them from doing that. So it's a really hard thing for you guys to, to control or to even have.
Yeah, it's, it's the worst job in the world.
We need to move on, yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Just want to do a brief update to the commission on the project we're working on. We're kind of, we're updating our special event or our community event permitting process. Um, the reason we're bringing this to you guys is because there's likely a team like our coaching team have that. And so, once we kind of nail down what that looks like, we'll bring those coaches back to you guys for, for commenting on the workshop. So we've seen an uptick, if you will, in, um, community events that are on private property, but are inviting the outside public. And traditionally, our community event permitting process is focused on community events on city property. And we're kind of finding that that maybe isn't adequate, that we probably need to start looking at some of these things that are on private property as well. Um, and so we, um, we're just gonna make some changes. So there's a little bit of gray area there and of the gray area seems to kind of come from a combination of incremental changes without really looking from the thousand foot level. But those things were kind of compounded by COVID and staff changes that happened during that time where the process just kind of got a little bit muddy and nobody really picked it back up and cleaned it up, so that's what we're gonna do. Um, so there's been some changes in the past, our files go back to two thousand and five. Um, the last, the, the first change that I could find was in two thousand and eleven, there were some changes to, um, let's see, there's changes to where co- community event signage could be placed. Um, and then in two thousand and fifteen, we added the definition of community event sign. And then in two thousand and twenty, we did some, um, changes to the mobile sales and concessions of food trucks. But again, those were kind of topic specific and now we really looked at the whole process and how we're doing it. So some of the changes we're looking at, the code changes will be to our definition section. Our temporary use section is really where the mobile sales and concessions live, so I, I'm anticipating that there will be some changes to that as well as the temporary signage. These will likely be pretty minor, um, just making sure that everything, all the different pieces are driving with each other and there's no conflicts. Um, another change that I see is, um, we've got quite a few applications, that kind of different applications that community event organizers have to fill out and they touch on each other, but, um, I'll use the Winter Bear Marathon as an example because they just submitted their application. Um, they ended up submitting a community event application, a temporary sign application and a right away permit. Um, so they'll have three separate permits associated with one event. And I'd like to see kind of all of those reviews come under one event because they're all associated with one, one thing. Um, so I'm, I'm hoping that will kind of make things clear for, for the applicant and for staff to just have everything under one, kind of one umbrella permit. Um, another change will be to, um, some technological changes, so I'm hoping that we can, um, right now in our community system, we have a community event permit that exists in our permit tracks, but it's not, um, right now we're not actively using that. Um, and we have an online permitting portal that allows people to kind of input some of their information online and then that shoots into our permit tracks and then your staff is made aware and then we kind of take it from there. So what I'd like to see is an online portal for people to be able to submit this stuff online. A lot of these community event organizers don't do this for a living, it's kind of a, it's not their day job, so they do them after hours. And requiring them to drop stuff off physically at city hall is can be inconvenient. So just providing that, that ability for people to do it online and have it shoot into our permit track system and then we're made aware and then we start doing some reviewing part of it. Um, so my next steps, I'm working on co- audit right now, just to kind of go through all the different provisions and work on the language and make sure that everything's, we're not creating a, a conflict anywhere. Um, and then I'm going to be working on the applications, just reviewing them, maybe seeing where we can kind of combine things, where we can simplify things, where we can make things as easy as possible for people to, to give us the information that we need to make sure that these things are safe. Um, and then I'll start working on the, the technology side of it and then, once we kind of have all of our ducks in a row, then we'll start doing some community outreach. We have a lot of legacy events that have been doing this for years and years and years and I don't want to see any interruption in that. I want to make sure that they're aware that these things are happening. It'll be a grace period for them as we kind of work through our process and they kind of get used to, used to this, but the way I kind of see this rolling out, it really won't be very much change on the applicant's side. Um, really, really the only difference that they'll see is maybe a difference in changes to the application itself and the ability to do it online.
More coordinated, streamline the process.
Hopefully, that is the hope, to streamline and simplify for both, for both sides, for staff and for the applicant. That's where, if there's any questions.
Sounds good.
I, I have a question. Is, when you talk about community events on private property, are, are we talking about, say, a a business that has a, um, an event on their property that's not necessarily related to that business? Like, like, I, I know there's, you know, I'll use Trail Breaker. They, they do these wrestling things down there. I only know that because I went to eat there and there was a wrestling match going on. Is that the kind of the community events that you were thinking of, of capturing here? Is that what we see out there?
I'm not sure about that event specifically, but kind of the defining line that I kind of imagined between meeting this permit and not is when you're inviting the general public in.
Um, you have tents and loudspeakers and music and, and you're bringing in, you're bringing in what, a grand opening event. We just, one of the things that kicked it off was the grand opening event at Ace Hardware. And if it hadn't been for the, for weather, they were going to have tents, music outside and barbecues and food trucks and everything. And, and, and we realized that there was kind of a disconnect between our process for community events that are sponsored by the city on public property and our process as it related to these.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious what kind of community events there are that, like, I know, go back to Trail Breaker, I've seen them driving by there, they sometimes have something going on there. I, I think it was maybe a political speech or something there or whatever. Is that the types of things you expect though to have those folks get a permit to have those types of events?
Well, some of those might be under our public assembly permits, well, there's some other things for like political events, religious activities, certain, um, other things of protected speech have a different permit. This one's really aiming at, and what I, what we're, what I'm trying to get to is, um, city resources, so like the police department, making sure the police department, our fire, our emergency responders are aware that these events are even happening and that, you know, there could be there could be something for them to be aware of. If we were for, say, you know, for example, if we had Ace Hardware, we had an Ace Hardware grand opening, we had a block party and then there was something happening at the community farm. The police would need to be made aware that there are three separate events happening throughout the community and that, you know, for their staffing purposes, just for city resources for our parks and our street staff, for them to be able to, to look at the whole picture. Right now, they're kind of getting a little snippet of it as we, as the person that receives the application sends it out. Whereas this would really put it into our permitting system and then we would, we would already have our reviewers that we normally send these things to.
Whether our business would, would know that they need to get a particular event permitted.
It's not that we're trying to regulate the events, but we're trying to make sure that the public safety aspects. And, you know, for example, so you, you have an event where you're going to be impacting the right of way, well, we can have a right of way permit that should be in that area, but not. There is a coordination component to all of these. You, you guys know how this happens. You'll be liking someone with all the events that are.
Yeah, I think the city's done a great job. I'm the president of Kiwanis, so we can talk about the permitting process. We fell a lot of this year. Um, for example, the yard sale, it's, we were very close with the police department. I think Richard, to your point, one of the events last year, that was a brand new event, was the church had that three hundred basketball tournament, which took up parking all over town. And so that kind of stuff, I think, is really important for the city to be involved in, so I if you need someone to take a look at things, let's work together because we're gonna be filling out several of those this year.
Fantastic, and that's excellent for our community outreach department, is just working with people that are using this and what, how can we make this easier for everybody?
For example, there for the park, we had a six page document that said if we have a problem, here's what we call it, police officers, we had everyone. This is the emergency evacuation, this is first aid, we have all that stuff available, so it's, it's involved. I, I'm really applauding you doing that more like a public because the work is really well.
But how would Trail Breaker as an example know or be aware of that, what happens?
I, I don't even know if it falls in, uh, what is the category again, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
That's why we work on our definitions.
You need to know more about it, but, but I would think it probably would be just like an event that they're having at the.
Notification. I would think they're, think they're putting things out there where they're inviting the general public, they're just saying, hey, we're having this event and we'd love for everybody to come. Then that's where we would want to, we would want to have some information about.
And, and I, I mean, it's a, there, when I was there, I, I'm not a Z, I, I was surprised, so. And, and in, in their room, they had paid seating that people attended that event, that wrestling, they had at least a half a dozen wrestling, uh, matches, you know, at the rain
Yeah.
in there while I was, while we were there, uh, and but I, I mean, other than it, it filled the parking lot and the road there, which Trail Breaker does that
Right.
quite a bit when they have their summer events too. I mean, whether it be music, I mean, if they have music on, outside on the lawn. You know, when you say they, they put a fight on that and invite the public, I mean, I think Trail Breaker expects public to go to their business. You know, so I think it's, it's an open invitation always to whatever they have. They might advertise that they have a so and so band there and, uh, in this case, a wrestling natural, I was just shocked they had that. But, but you know, that's, is that the, that's what I was asking. Just be aware, I, I mean, that, when we define that and when, when you get through all this.
When we get to the point where we're, we're doing definitions and what we mean by community event.
Yeah.
You know, uh, special events that are part of a business like that, I wouldn't necessarily consider that. Did their, when they did their grand opening, they were gonna close off the parking lot and they were gonna have food trucks and they were gonna have amplified sound and they were gonna have they were gonna block off portions of their parking lot, which is private property. They were gonna close off the parking lot, and they were gonna have food trucks, and they were gonna have amplified sound, and they were gonna have, they were gonna block off portions of their parking lot, which is private property, but. When you consider if someone, or if there were to be, you know, a fire with a food truck, or if there was to be a medical emergency, how is, how are emergency responders gonna be able to get to that person, and how you have it configured? So we'll have to just look really carefully at how we're defining community event, and right now, I think that's one of our, actually one of our bigger challenges, is that our definition is not terribly clear by what we mean by that.
Uh, my, my question, uh, along the same lines, what if an individual homeowner or, uh, an HOA says they want to do something, and they want to invite the entire community? You're not saying that the city wants to determine what you can do and cannot do.
No, we're just saying, we just want to be notified.
So that you know, there's something going on over here in case of an event, and how to properly provide for security.
Exactly.
And those types of things.
Precisely, just how, you know, a lot of it is just to inform the people that would be responding to something there, it's also for our city staff, you know, we've got street crews, we've got parks, people that, that maintain these facilities, and so letting them know that. There could be some impacts to those types of things, we had, um, there was an event at the community farm that was gonna kind of tie in with Winter Bowl, and that was another one that. Let us, that kind of was like, we, we should be looking at this because of the configuration of the lot, and the way, you know, the way that somebody would have to respond, should there be an, an issue there? As well as it tying into a community event that was happening across the street, and people crossing the right of way, there was just a lot of kind of safety components that we needed to have other people aware of besides.
Just doing it at their home, if they're home, but they are inviting, um, many people, uh, to come.
To kind of part, it's, that's.
Yeah. However, they're inviting the city, they're putting out signs, they're inviting anybody in the city to come, they're putting out, maybe putting out signs.
So again, there, there's things that, that we would be looking at to see if there were triggers. Are they doing large tents, it's gonna be larger than a certain amount, um, there's concern about, you know, uh, building code and stamp flaps and people and whatnot, there. It actually has to be permitted above the surface.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, is it pertaining to private property as well as businesses?
Again, if it's, if it's a community event, if it's a community event that's going on, um, then potentially it could, but again, that's. Those are the things that, that's the, exactly, you, you guys are hitting on, exactly the point that we've been struggling with the staff, is that definitions are terrible. And where's the line, and what should we be looking at, and we're just really trying to, um, provide a clean and concise. Process, so that, again, we're not so much regulating as we are making sure that, um, that. Resources that may be necessary to protect life, health, and safety, um, are aware of what's going on.
And I only ask that because on my private property, there is something that needs to be proposed to happen in the near future, and I wanted to know, does that. Does that entail people who have their private property, not, not Ace Hardware, not so what and so on? But they are going, wanna put out signs along the roadways, saying this is gonna be happening in this area?
Are you gonna have, uh, music and a loudspeaker?
Um, there will be music, there is proposed to have music, and it would probably matter loudspeaker, and that's why this is good, because since this is brand new, what we're hearing.
Right.
At least.
We actually have some requirements now about getting put into loudspeaker, also.
Okay, good.
Things that nobody knows about, that's okay, that's the problem.
Well, that's good, because now we get to ask the question, entertain them, all the different nuances before we decide to do it.
Will, will you have a food truck and beer tents?
Um, we, we will, we will probably have a food truck, we will probably, we would definitely have music, um, it, 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 um, it depends. Um, it's gonna happen in spring.
Would it be a text with stuff?
Uh, probably, uh, uh, probably not, but, um.
We're, we're running out of time, yeah, so let's, let's move on, uh. Thank you, Amy.
So, Secretary's report, um, so Stephen Ramirez did resign, um, I believe that, uh, Jim's gonna be submitting his application, so the mayor can. Take you back to city council to get him on, so voting number will be advertised for those positions, um, or for the, for the vacant adjunct position after that happens. Um. Uh, what else, um? I will be sending you all links to the, the recently codified developing code, um, so that you all have access to that, um. We will be, we are working on clearing up our website, um, there's a lot of old materials and vestiges and dead links and things like that, so that's, that's one of the things we are working on. Our next planning meeting, we will be looking at, uh, number one, hopefully, a relatively quick review of. Updates to this R V storage, and make sure that we're good to go to Stephanie's for instance, and then rush that in March, I'll be. And, um, also, um, Amy's gonna be, uh, spending a little more time on building heights. Workshop, and so, anyhow, that's, that, that's what we have, we have at our next meeting, um, thank you all, great conversation, great discussion today, great input, um. Guys, just awesome to work with.
Any other reports, anybody have anything else to say? Uh, citizen comments, I think are, unless we have somebody online still.
No, we do not.
Okay, and we did, we brought that up, so.
Um, does somebody want to report, plan, or to city council, um?
So should we be reporting yet?
It's your, it's your, it's your option, you can wait.
I would like to wait till we have a little more workshop conclusion, so we can, we can be a little more definitive than what we are thinking of. So. All right, so thank you, uh, moved that we, uh.
That's not good.
All the favor.
Hi.
Hi.